Good morning, everyone. We will call the Community Emergency Services Committee to order. Follow me, please. Our most high and mighty Lord, we thank you for all of the gifts that you bestow us with, the people that you surround us with. We know that we are sustained by your mercies and that we must be good people to remain in enjoyment of your graces. Thank you for all of the people around us who protect us, who keep our quality of life, our fire, safety, first responders, and police. We are a people facing an uncertain future, and we ask you to come reside with us as we consider the best path for our people in our community. Amen. We have Commissioner Richardson and myself today to carry the day. Sir, we have the minutes of the previous meeting. What's your pleasure with them?
Motion to approve.
So moved. Presentation. I understand we have leadership here with us today. Stand up here. Let us embarrass you. Come on, let us know about you. Please introduce yourselves.
And where you from, where you work?
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us. I'd like to... We have introduction of Lauren Luoma. Yes, please come up. I need to come see you this week.
Yes, you do.
My wife said I'd...
About yesterday.
After my wife said I do. Now, she told you that we execute every plant that comes onto our farm, right? I do need help. Okay? Please, please go on.
Well, good morning. I want to thank y'all for having us this morning. In extension, it's kind of a cooperative thing, and what I enjoy is working with not only y'all, but also the managers and staff, especially the people that are here, that are behind us. So we are truly grateful for that. So without further ado, I want to introduce Lauren Luoma, who is our new 4-H agent. We do have a very limited amount of time because we'll be going to classroom right after this, but...
Hi, I'm Lauren Luoma. I'm actually a native of Columbia County. I grew up, I graduated from Lakeside with Dr. Carney as my principal back in 2009. Graduated from UGA. Finally made my way back home after 22 years. I'm just really excited to get back involved in the program or back in school after being virtual for two years. So we have a lot of great programming planned. You're going to start seeing us more in the community. We were already at Ironman on Sunday, about 26 volunteers for 107 volunteer hours over the day. So we're just really excited to be back involved in the community. Need anything of our youth. Trying to show off my kids all the time. We're just here for you, and we're really excited to be more involved in the community.
Very good. Welcome. I have Ms. Priscilla Benz, like to speak to us. How are you doing this morning, Priscilla?
You can pass it up for you. Absolutely.
I have.
Got one?
Yes, sir.
Is it Gary? Here we go.
Thank you for letting me speak today, Commissioners. I appreciate the work you do. Appreciate the wonderful work here in the government complex and the beautiful library. I'm a mother and grandmother and been living here for 38 years, retired Army. I worked 20 years in public health, 15 years supervising, 13 years supervising HIV/STD clinics. What I noticed, the problem I'm bringing to your attention, is that when I went to the library a few months ago, there was a book named Drama, shelf next to the bottom in the juvenile section, and I had already challenged it at the school. And I challenged it, and the challenge was denied. But my concern is that these LGBTQ, pro-gay, pro-homosexual agenda books are interspersed throughout the entire library. And what I'm recommending is that they be labeled and put into the adult section. The problem that you have is that the authors of these books want them interspersed. They want to increase the acceptance of the homosexual alternative lifestyle, alternative lifestyle. But if we separate them into the adult section, have supervision by parents and guardians, then I think we're representing the people of the county better than just interspersing them. The problem with... That I met with at the library board when I talked to them is that there are authors that request the books be in certain age-designated areas. And what I'm saying is that the author should not dictate to the community where we have these books. The authors are gonna... Every single one is going to want them in the age that they want to affect. They want to increase LGBTQ acceptance, and not just acceptance, but actually increase that lifestyle. And that's what we've seen happen over the last 30 years. Do we want that for Columbia County? There's counties that make exception to that. They separate out the books, let the adults, let the parents or the guardians decide if they want their child to read that. An alternate to that would be putting the children's books behind the librarians at the circulation desk, so that the parent coming through can ask for that book, because many parents will preview the books before their children see them. However, that is impossible if you've got two or three kids and you've got a good reader, five or six-year-old, like one of my grandkids. They can easily go over to the juvenile, or they can get a book that's graphic, that's extremely pro-homosexual lifestyle, that encourages children to be popular, to be the greatest thing, you know, to live the alternative lifestyle, the second shelf from the bottom in the juvenile youth section, which is right next to the children's section. Though an easy, not easy, but the most doable thing would be to label these books, put them in the adult section. That includes the children, juvenile youth, and young adult. Why do I say young adult? Because even that room downstairs is frequented by young teens. I've watched... You've got children under 18 that are going into these, that are reading these books with no supervision. You can't possibly supervise kids in all those areas. There's been some mix-up in the community, saying that somebody challenged to kill a mockingbird. I don't know who that person is. That's history. We learn from hard truths that we read in books, but we don't want to teach our children that it's better to be a homosexual or lead an alternative lifestyle. We know now. We know for the last 30 years, we've watched the data. More suicides, more depression, more mental illness. Shorter lifestyle, 25 years shorter lifespan, excuse me. We know these facts, and as the adults, as the guardians of our children, we need to watch what they're taking in their brains. We're protecting them because they're under 18, just like we do with alcohol, smoking, movies that we rate. We don't let a five-year-old go to an R-rated movie. Firearms that we purchase, we don't let underage purchase firearms. We don't even let our teenagers get married without signing permission. So that's my recommendation, and I'm assuming that... The one assumption I am making is that most people in this county are either Christian, Hindu, or Muslim. All three of those religions do not encourage homosexuality or alternative lifestyles. None of those religions. And probably most of the other religions of the world do not encourage it. We know, in fact, that it's a symptom of a declining civilization. Do we want to slow it down, safeguards? Or do we want to hurt it along with our children and our grandchildren? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I... Mary Lyndes here. Can I call on you to review for us? I never examine a question. We should look at what the rules and the statutes are. Yeah, you please do that for us.
Okay. So I'll start off with the stats. In our children's collection, which is from board books, books, easy books, juvenile books, there's a total of 33,753 items. 71 of those items are of the subject that spoke about, which is .2 of our collection for children. We purchase books through our vendor. The librarians that purchase, that select the books read reviews, and if they have great reviews, if they're on the New York Times Bestseller list, we will purchase those. If they don't have such good reviews, or if they're self-published, we typically don't purchase those unless a patron specifically requests that item. When we purchase items, the author, there are authors that write all different age levels. They have an age range for books. It's not necessarily that the author says their book has to go here. Sometimes when we purchase a book, and it will come in, and we go... My cataloger catalogs it. She looks in the pine system, which is statewide, and if the book came to us saying it should be, I don't know, maybe easy, but everybody else has it, or the majority of all the other libraries in the state have it in picture, the children's librarian and the cataloger will discuss where the best place to place it. There is...
So by definition, a children's book shouldn't really require the approval of an adult helping...
No, but we do have in our policy that it is the... It specifically states in there, in our collection development policy, that the parent has the, is the responsible person, and it is up to them on what, to monitor what their children check out or read. It's basic, it basically puts it back on the parent, because we are not responsible. We just provide all of the material.
When you talk about bestsellers, whose list are you looking at? Not the New York Times, I hope?
We look at New York Times. They look at all of that seller lists out there. Correct. Yes, usually it's adults that request books. We really don't have many adults that request specific books for children. It's usually for themselves. The first thing we do is see if it's in the statewide system, and if it is, we put it on hold for them. And then we do some research to see if we need to purchase that particular book.
Member of that?
It's the... American Library Association is the professional association for libraries, librarians. Our Friends Group has a membership to it for the libraries, for the Columbia County libraries. Some of my staff are members of it. Basically, we are, they are members of it for the professional development. We don't, they don't follow any, I guess, recommendations or guidelines to purchase materials. They basically use the lists that the vendor sends are based on popularity, availability. And what other, what other librarians have said about the items. But no, they don't... Mainly their membership to ALA is for the professional development. They don't always, we don't always, don't like follow word-for-word what ALA says. The only thing we follow is the Library Bill of Rights, the freedom to read, and the freedom to view are the three basic things that all libraries follow.
Now, it's possible for me to vanity publish a book and with 500 of my best friends make it a bestseller. Is that, is that a process that can enter category of books?
If it's self-published, it won't go... It will only come to our attention if a patron brings it to our attention. We typically don't purchase self-published books because there are grammatical errors, punctuation errors.
So there are no vanity books in that?
Right.
Collection?
Yes. And that's also part of your censoring this one already group and then calling attention to them. So nobody, everybody's going to want to go, oh, what are these books over here? They're special. But then also the books that they are intended for, those people are not going to want to go over there because everyone is going to know.
Well, thank you for clarifying that for us.
Welcome. Thank you.
Moving right into debate here. Animal services donations, et cetera. Mr. Luton?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have a couple of donations for animal services, one in the amount of $500 from Deborah Raab and $100 from KNS Alteration. Staff recommends approval.
Mr. So moved?
And I believe Mr. Johnson's going to...
I'll take the next two, Mr. Chairman. Next you have is a service agreement with the City of Harlem. This is for the Oliver Hardy Festival. Historically, the county has supported that with hotel motel tax due to the number of patrons. They have not made the request the last couple of years, but it is an item that we have traditionally budgeted for in hotel motel tax. Before you have a service agreement, recommending the approval of $3,000 for the 2022 Oliver Hardy Festival.
So moved.
And then the next item you have is a lease agreement with the Family Y. As you know, the Family Y has been utilizing space in our exhibition center since the beginning, since we moved into that building. We have been working with them over the years to discuss potentially building a larger facility. That's something that I think was slowed down a bit by COVID, and I think they were on the right track, and it slowed down a bit. This is a lease extension just for one year. We're not looking to do an entire term. I have been in discussions with the president and CEO of the Y, letting them know that it's the county's long-term intention to fully utilize that building for county uses so they would have to, you know, move forward with their capital project. My understanding is that they're moving forward, trying to raise the funds now, or begin the process to do that. But we are only entering into a one-year agreement. You can see the terms of the agreement here. It will begin on October 4, 2022, and terminate April 30, 2023. I believe Mr. Luton sits on that board. Is that correct? So, you know, I think we've been doing this since 2010. We could do whatever increments we want to. I think we really need to have a really, we need to have a serious conversation with the Y as to what their intent is. And I think just doing this, getting us on track, making sure that we have the approval. I believe we may have missed one of our renewals. That allows, allows them to stay. The contract allows them to stay. They've been paying rent. There's been no problem with any of that. But I think we're comfortable with terminating soon, and then we need to decide what we need to do, and we need a real timeline as to when they're going to be moving out.
That was my point.
Yes, sir.
This is... When we left out, we're going to be building to you. Hadn't broke ground.
Right.
Just broke ground. Months before we can count, so...
Again, I think it's, I think it's, you know, we could do another five-year contract right now if we decided we wanted to do that. I don't know that that's in the best interest of the county to do that at this point. I think this year to year, getting us back on cycle and then doing a year to year with the understanding that we need that additional space is the better way to go, and that's the recommendation.
I don't, I don't know any, any further information.
I will say that we are also looking at a land swap. There was, there was a bit of an issue with connectivity and access, and there's a piece of land that the Y would like access to, to be able to move forward with it, with their project, their self-building project. And there's a piece of land across the road that does them no good, that I think would be beneficial to the county. So we're looking at that now. We've already had that survey. We've worked that out. So that's another discussion that Mr. McConnell and I will need to have.
So moved. Mr. Driver, any legal matters?
Thank you.
We have staff reports. Before we start, Chief, thank you for extinguishing samples last night.
Well, it'll probably be active for a couple of days.
Yeah, they're close to my barn, so thank you.
Yeah, that was a big operation. I have the year-to-date response summary and the August response summary, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. And I have our year-to-date budget report.
All right, sir. Any questions? Can we accept that information? We have any Commissioner public comments? Nothing in executive session? Gern, 8:51. Engine light's going to come on, yeah?
I'd like to call to order the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee, September 27. Already having the invocation and pledge.
I have, sir. I move to accept them.
And okay, Mr. Johnson?
Ready for your approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Right on down to presentation. Proclamation this morning. Katie Beth and Mike and Connie, y'all come up?
Proclamation for Stormwater Awareness Week. Whereas Columbia County is fortunate to have abundant fresh water resources, a lake, river, numerous streams and wetlands we use to support life, the economy, and recreational activities. Whereas water bodies that wind their way through the county feed the mighty Savannah River, our community draws an average of 12 to 33 million gallons of water per day from the Savannah River for drinking and other water uses. Whereas the health of our waterways depends on many factors, primarily among them being the clean water, clean stormwater recharge. The journey of a raindrop to the Savannah River is where we all come in. Whereas streams, rivers, and lakes are degraded by pollution, a lot of which can be prevented through education, awareness, and action. And whereas litter, car fluids, pet waste, and dirt are just a few of the common pollutants that during rain events get collected by stormwater and transported directly into our stormwater infrastructure and natural waterway systems. And whereas the stormwater department works to reduce pollution through education, planning, inspections, and maintenance activities, many other departments support the mission also. Whereas it is recognized that the community can support this mission by picking up after pets, throwing trash in designated receptacles, cleaning up soils, spills, and being conscious of how daily activities can influence water quality. Now, therefore, in recognition of the vital role of water resources in this community, Columbia County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim, last week in September is Stormwater Awareness Week, and encourage citizens of Columbia County to help protect and preserve water quality by taking action to prevent degradation of these resources. Y'all for what you do. Report is very lengthy and a lot of good information that y'all had in our packet. Appreciate it. Thank you for everything. Say something.
I would just say that we're very fortunate to have proactive staff that look ahead and understand the importance of our water infrastructure and stormwater runoff, so we appreciate it. Sure. So we have Katie Beth Jennings. She's our stormwater compliance manager, department manager. We have Connie Smith, who's over our flood plains. And then we have Mike Zoner, who's over our stormwater operations group.
Next up, I think Connie has to report for us.
Doing well today? Our yearly update for our hazard mitigation. Two projects are complete, projects on our list. First project is Point Comfort, Triple Line of 16. That was badly corroded. Actually had a rain event that came in. Pipes, bottom of the pipe was so corroded, pipes folded in, caused the water to build up and flood the road. Flip line, you know, the pipe with a 48-inch HP storm. Pressure grew out around the post, which is the middle pipe, and then our new pipe, just in between. Two pipes, but the boy running underneath the pipe washed away. Second project was the Waterville, Triple Line of 84 inches. Same scenario, just bad, badly corroded pipe. Next picture you can see where it actually came in during a rain event. Pipes underneath the pipe shooting up. Pipe with CP. Progress of the work. Our last project that we were taking off the list is the Catamore Stormwater Upgrade Project. It was over a thousand-foot of pipe that we added. Gone during this rain. Got to call every time, hard rain event from this. After this project was completed. Actually called me back. Come by and get it.
I made a case.
Project consisted of going in between houses, upgrading the pipes up the middle, Catamore Drive. Remember that cost of that project, Mike? Uh, right at $800,000. All three of those projects were...
All of these projects?
We done one of those, layer construction, water villain. Probably done, house we've probably done like these.
We're very fortunate to have staff that can take on a lot of these larger projects in-house. But sometimes they do, depending on staff's workload and or the magnitude of the complexity of the project, we do.
I think it's important too to just, just to note, there's a lot of discussion about stormwater fees. And people talk about the rain tax in Columbia County and how that's used. This, these projects that Mr. Zoner and his team have done this year have spent the bulk of the, of the money that was collected over this year. So that's three projects. As you know, we have hundreds of projects. We do have splosts coming up. We do have some, some pretty extensive projects listed on that splosts. Should it pass, we'll be able to use that money to be able to help with this. But I think people sometimes get confused when they say, well, I'm paying my stormwater fee. There should be plenty of money there to be able to do that. Here again, you see three critical projects that were done, and it spent the bulk of the money we had for the entire year. So should we have had another project or one that we're looking at for splosts that could potentially be upwards to twenty million dollars? Would take us ten years of doing no projects to have enough money to do that.
Project we've had from Richmond County, out aging.
That's right.
That infrastructure. Or because of hot problems for all the development that come down the road. Flooded up this way, water can't get where it needs to go. Development, so nobody likes paying it. Thankful to have that we will.
You pull your mic down just a little bit, Mr. Chairman.
And Mike, Mike and his department does a fantastic job on getting out and taking care of this stuff and the pension funds and what y'all doing, all of those. And so, thank you, Mike, and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
On down, we'll go right into the debate.
Eric, good morning. How are y'all today? Uh, the first item I have is a sewer repair or sewer reroute on Ronald Reagan Drive. Um, we have a section of that sewer that has a little belly in it that drops and it clogs occasionally. So we have to go out every several weeks and maintain the sewer to keep it from clogging and backing up. And uh, it's a little more difficult than just repairing that one spot because we have conflicts with other utilities in place already. So we need to reroute this sewer. And uh, we had a budget of two hundred and fifty thousand to do that. Took a bid and it came in at three ninety-nine. Um, we went back to Blair, which is the low bidder, um, through procurement and negotiated with them and changed some of the methods of construction. Like, you know, we plan on open cutting because that's usually the cheapest way to go. Uh, but they were concerned about a lot of the utilities in the road are in Ronald Reagan. So if they bore, we were able to reduce it by seventy thousand. And so the new bid price is three twenty-nine, nine forty, and staff recommends approval or awarding the, um, project to Blair Construction.
We have a question. I didn't see a timeframe in here. I saw where there's a penalty, uh, if it goes over, but I didn't see the timeframe unless I just missed it.
Um, we'll set, I'll have to go back and look and see how many days we gave them. We usually set the notice to proceed at the pre-construction meeting. Based on the contract, how many other days they give them to complete, that'll set our timeframe. Yes, sir.
Move to consent, sir.
No move.
Uh, the next item we have is a maintenance agreement with Yancey Power Systems. Uh, we maintain, or the county maintains most of our generators, but any of our generators larger than five hundred KW, we outsource. And we have five locations that, um, we outsource maintenance on those generators. And we're running a three-year contract with Yancey Power for, um, for ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five cent. And our staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Move to consent, sir.
No move.
Uh, the next item we have is the purchase of two cabin chassis Peterbilt, from Peterbilt of Atlanta. Um, our existing units are, our cabin chassis are two thousand and nine. They're getting some age on them and we're starting to have some maintenance issues with them. Uh, they're two thousand and nine freight liners. And we want to purchase replacement cabin chassis for those, but we're going to use the maintainer tool bodies, pull those off the existing and replace. Um, we had a budget of two hundred and fifty thousand and the, um, price came in from state contract at two hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Staff recommends approval of this purchase.
All of these are saying two thousand and twenty-four for the year? Or are they out a long time before you'll get them? Or are they backordered? Or is it something you're gonna be able to get?
I'll have to refer to Nick on that. He, um, got all the quotes for us.
I challenged him to get through it without talking about Fleet, but uh, he obviously couldn't. We're working with Peterbilt. They're projecting them to be twenty twenty-four models, although they were nice enough to hold us spots pending y'all's approval. Um, but they are based on the twenty twenty-four model year contract pricing with the state. But we don't really have a projected date of completion. They're record, they're looking at possibly eight to ten months, and then we're still in line to get the body put on it. But we are planning on getting them. They're holding our trucks, they said.
It all falls in line with the budget process and money allocated and so forth and.
Yes, sir. The way water utility works is we'll, we'll transfer that money into the Fleet Fund once the purchase is made. So Reese does a good job of keeping up with it. There's a few more.
Look, look here, it's y'all's lucky day. I mean, my goodness.
All right, where's your pleasure? Move to consent, sir.
No move. Chairman's probably bouncing around this morning, but just playing.
Mr. Chairman's doing just fine in Charleston.
He's doing fine. Okay, he's, he's just where he needs to be. Okay, we're all good.
Yes, sir. The, uh, the next item we have is a purchase of a pumper truck from Peterbilt of Atlanta. Um, we currently, when we need a pumper truck, we have to rent them. Uh, we don't have one. And uh, this is a budgeted item, um, that will help our wastewater, um, department out. It has a, has a large tank that helps us for cleaning out sewer lines and sometimes wet wells as, as needed. And uh, we have a quote of two hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-two cent. And we came in twenty-eight cents under budget.
All right.
We budgeted two-ten, so uh, staff recommends approval of this purchase.
Hey, do, we have to do that rental from those regular basis? I mean, that's an ongoing real regular deal, isn't it?
It's an ongoing deal, yes, sir.
I'm surprised that hadn't already got a pumper truck.
Move to consent, sir.
No move.
The next item is the, uh, purchase of a single-axle CDL dump truck from Peterbilt of Atlanta. Um, this dump truck was actually in last year's budget, uh, but we couldn't get one. So Nick was, um, was finally able to procure a spot for one of these. And, um, we had budgeted in last year's budget ninety thousand dollars for this unit. Um, so it's because of the way things have increased, um, over time and, and over the last few years, um, the, the price came in at a hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-three cent. And uh, this is a replacement. We're gonna replace shop number six eighty-seven. Um, and I didn't put that in here, but I, I wrote that down, um, later. And uh, which is a year model two thousand. It's a much older truck. And uh, staff recommends approval of this purchase.
Move to consent, sir.
No move.
The next item is a compact track loader for our conveyance department for the easement cutting crew. Um, we, we need these quite often. And uh, this is a new unit. It's not a replacement. We, uh, we had budgeted a hundred and forty thousand dollars for it. The price came in at one sixty-four, nine thirty-six. Um, but we have, we have several over there. The one, the Bobcat we bought recently, we've, it seems to be in the shop more than we use it. It's, it's, we've had problems. So we're trying out the, uh, the one from Caterpillar, and uh, staff recommends approval of this purchase.
We do have several of these.
We have two in our conveyance department now that we're utilizing, and we kind of share between groups or twin crews.
Move to consent, sir.
The, uh, the last item is the purchase of two replacement dump trucks from Peterbilt of Atlanta. The, uh, the dump trucks, these are wrecked trucks. And so this will be done through our damage prevention, um, or risk management, I'm sorry. Uh, but there are two trucks that have, that have been wrecked over the last several years. One of them was wrecked about two years ago, and we just haven't been able to get a replacement. So we've been down, uh, dump trucks, and one was wrecked earlier this year. And uh, so they'll be replacing those. The, um, the trucks are a hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-six each for a total of two sixty-four, nine sixty-two. And staff recommends approval of these replacements.
Total loss of dump truck. What, what happened? I mean, roll them or they are?
Well, the, the first one, um, he was coming through an intersection, and a young lady tried to hurry up and make the turn. And uh, and she cut him off, and he just hit her right in the side. There was nothing he could do. The second one, not exactly sure what happened. Um, but uh, he went in a ditch, hit the ditch, and went airborne and rolled the truck. And uh, and uh, he didn't want to get drug tested, so he's no longer working for us.
Sounds like they were worth seeing. Enter.
No move.
All laugh.
That's all. You sound, you sound like Mr. Blanchard this morning. Cyrus, you ready?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, the first item we have is an engineering service proposal with Keck and Wood for the design of Washington Road corridor improvements. It includes upgrading the current signals at Bel Air Road and Washington Road at Ronald Reagan Drive in Washington and Evans Stalox at Washington. Fan wire to mast arms. It also includes installing a right turn lane at Evans Stalox onto Washington Road and installing a, um, prohibitive left turn off of Faircloth on the Washington Road. Five total projects. Uh, this is for the survey, surveying, design, permitting needed. Take these to bid.
Hey, on Faircloth, will that change that to no left end? Or I know.
The left end will still be allowed.
Left end will still be.
Not be a left.
Right out.
It will not be a left out.
A left out.
Yes, sir. Off of Faircloth onto Washington. Um, this would be funded out of seventeen twenty-two splosts. Uh, we reached out to three, uh, engineering firms. Uh, we got three proposals. They range from a hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars to a hundred and fifty-two thousand. Based on the, we requested both a quote for the work and also an approach and a schedule for the work. Um, based on the approach and the schedule and the fee, um, staff's chosen Keck and Wood. Their original proposal was a hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and thirteen cents. Um, after we selected them, we asked them to go back and add Faircloth. It was a last-minute addition. I said the total fee proposal now, the staff's requesting is for a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and thirteen cents.
Looks like the scenario is gonna be here long?
Well, the, the survey, design, and permitting. We got a permit through G dot District and G dot Atlanta, Traffic Management Office in Atlanta.
We have funding allocated for these units once.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Move to consent, sir.
No move.
Okay, the next item is for cellphone allowances for traffic signal techs. Uh, we currently have two signal techs, uh, receiving seven hundred and twenty dollars a year cellphone allowance. We were seeing no, no cellphone allowance. After working with staff and understanding how much these folks are on their phones, on calls and via email coordinating, uh, projects or with Sheriff's Department or utility companies, um, the, the traffic department themselves, we feel the need to upgrade, uh, all signal techs who want to receive a cellphone allowance to the full data and, uh, cellphone package at fourteen forty each. So this will be a total cost impact, um, written here or not. But we'd be going from seven twenty to fourteen forty for two techs. And we would take, uh, two additional techs who receive nothing now to fourteen forty each. Um, one clarification we show here that this is funded out of IPTF, but after speaking with county management and finance, uh, we would like to fund this fifty percent of IPTF and fifty percent of T-splosh discretionary. Staff recommends approval.
Y'all did say that these guys are able to, if they get a call, they're able to start monitoring and even make some corrections with signals.
Correct. So in addition to their everyday, um, calls and communications at work, um, when they're on call, or if they're not on call, but they need a person that is on call, was coordinated or work with them or need to, um, they can get on their phone, they get on Genetek app and, you know, work signals and, and see what's going on and help communicate from the traffic's point.
Does this reflect the immense, uh, data files that they have to download? Is there correcting the items? I'd imagine there's a lot of video.
Genetek, the, the app, and I'm sure Mrs. Slotter can, can speak a little more on it, but I know it uses a lot of, the, the app that monitors the cameras uses a tremendous amount of data.
I have the app on my phone. I do have the app on my phone. It's, it's a large app, and it's a lot of data, and it's, uh, I use it for different reasons than they do. But uh, our system is smart. It's all web-based. They will be use their phones. Um, one for, for manipulating signals if they need to from home. Also, they can turn their hotspot on their phones and then use their laptop to also figure signals. So, um, I had to mention all the emails that are going back and forth with these guys. They can now work where they're at versus having to come back to the office. I, I think it's a, it's a good move to have these guys work from the field.
Move to consent, sir.
No move.
Okay, the next item is, uh, a request to reject RFQ two oh two-two oh oh three, dash RFQ two seven two zero for the Pass Sidewalk Extension. Earlier this year, staff issued an RFQ to design, build teams to design and build a sidewalk along the pass on the Clarksville Point, uh, down the Riverwatch Parkway. We shortlisted two of the three firms that submitted. Uh, we brought them in for interviews, shortlisted two of the three. And then the two that we did shortlist, we asked for prices to, um, to actually deliver the project. And they were, uh, a great deal. Uh, the, the prices were much larger than we anticipated. We had one point one, uh, budgeted for the project, and the prices came in at five point four and one point seven. Um, so just well over what we had originally budgeted. Um, so staff is recommending, uh, requesting that the commission reject RFQ responses.
So at this point, we are abandoning the idea of looking at sidewalks, that area. Is that?
At this time, we do not have funding identified for, for a project of that scale.
Enter.
So move.
Next item is an agreement with Alfred and Benish and Company, Alfred, Benish and Company for the I twenty Gateway Signs and Landscaping Project. This is to sign, uh, both the monument signs, the Columbia County Monument signs, and the landscaping, uh, for the, uh, one eighty-three exit and the Bel Air Road exit on I twenty. We're finishing the, the phase one and phase two, uh, portions of that project. Um, we have about four hundred thousand remaining to, to design and construct these signs. Alfred and Benish, uh, proposed funding, design, survey, and permitting for these for sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Staff recommends approval.
This is pretty much the location that show, showing in these photos or. This pretty much the location that show, showing in these photos or can they be a little bit closer to the, the entrance of the ramp? Or one on Bel Air Road especially seems like it's halfway up the ramp and.
So the way this works is we will uh, work with Benish on a concept phase and we're going to hug that, we're going to locate that sign as close to the ramp and interstate as we can. Uh, it's, but we have to stay within clear zone requirements uh, to meet, meet their standards. We're going to get it as close to that convergence point as it.
Mr. Chairman, one of the issues here was that concept plan. I'm, I'm, I'm not real happy size and the locations either. So we're going to have to see that concept plan. That's something that the board's going to get to see before we move forward with this project.
Move to consent, sir.
The next item, I'm going to ask Katie Beth to come up and present.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, this request is ask the chairman of the Board of Commissioners to sign the annual rating system program. That program is voluntary, that Columbia County continues to be a part of every year because of the tools it brings to this making us more flood-ready and flood-resilient. This time last year, we stepped into a class six designation, which is the best we've ever been. And results in a 20% discount for our citizens on flood insurance. But that discount is just one of the many benefits of this program. I believe that y'all have a pretty lengthy packet showcasing a lot of the activities we do. And that's just a random selection that they told us to report on this year. By a lot of different groups such as Mike Zoner and Stormwater Operations, Tony Smith, our Flood Plan Manager, and a lot of other groups in the county. But in the end, it only, not only makes our individual citizens um, a little more ready for a possible flood, but also our community as a whole grow and we, we need to make sure that we are educated and ready.
So can we improve our level more of a discount or is that, are we, where we can achieve?
I love that question. We, we absolutely can. We are looking into it right now and we, we will continue to push to be the best that we can be.
Do, that's the.
The, the county manager's recently asked us to see if we can upgrade that, so we're, we're working on that now.
So the request here is for the chairman to be able to sign off on the documentation that needs to be?
Yes, sir.
Enter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie Beth. The next item we have is for the acceptance of improvements for Hanover Place. This is uh, the new development off of Evans Stalox Road. Uh, this will be a private development. Uh, all the infrastructure in the development will be private except for the water and sanitary sewer systems along with the easements associated with these improvements. Staff recommends approval.
Enter.
Don't move.
The next one we have is acceptance of improvements for APS Tanner Court Investments LLC. Uh, this is the recent, um, recently opened uh, store off of Evans Stalox at Fury's Ferry. Um, whenever county abandoned a portion of the Tanner Court right-of-way. Uh, there were, there was a outfall, storm drainage outfall from Fury's Ferry discharging into that right-of-way. Um, we need access to that easement so that we can maintain that. Uh, our goal is, is once the Fury's Ferry project is complete, to deed that GDOT. But at this point in time, with the Fury's Ferry project going on, we'd still like to maintain access. We see the most efficient path forward. Um, effective path forward right now to not uh, slow down the Fury's Ferry project would be to accept the easement. Um, part of the counties, uh, had the county accept the easement and then a future date Columbia County, uh, deed to GDOT. Staff recommends approval of the acceptance of all the storm and the, there's also a san, uh, sanitary sewer um, service manhole and associated.
Move to consent, sir.
Don't move.
Uh, the next item we have is acceptance of improvements for Edmensen Moncrief LLC. 4400 Riverwatch Parkway. This is for a, currently the, there is a plan put together for a five-suite office complex right off of Riverwatch Parkway. Uh, one of the uh, requirements is they install a right turn D cell lane. Uh, in order to do that, they need to dedicate some right-of-ways to the county to maintain uh, maintenance of, of Riverwatch Parkway. Uh, when they install this turn lane. Uh, staff recommends acceptance of right-of-ways shown on the plaque.
So there'll be additional turn lane, what's shown in this photo? For a project or property down the road, is that correct? So they'll build additional turn lane?
They're going to, the current turn, the, the turn lane they're proposing is not there in the new turn lane.
Move to consent.
Don't move.
The next item is acceptance of improvements for Grand Oak River Island LLC. Uh, this is to, this includes a sidewalk and associated easement abutting of Black Stone Camp Road. Uh, the, the county's working on right now a plan to tie basically River Island um, to Stallings Island Middle School. This is part of that plan. And the accepted sidewalk along with a sanitary sewer service manhole and a master meter uh, water service easement. Um, staff recommends acceptance of all the easements.
Where this sidewalk, and I know this is different, but where the sidewalk ends. Do you have an agreement with the developer that we will be able to continue that sidewalk instead of it dead-ending and?
Correct. There's a, there's a condition as a part of their rezoning that they must dedicate that easement over to us. We're working with the developer now on executing that easement.
Communication with the Board of Education, so it doesn't stop and looks like.
That's correct. We met with the Board of Education uh, about two or three weeks ago. Uh, they're aware, uh, as soon as we get the easements dedicated to the county and sta, and staff's able to construct that sidewalk, um, they're coming in right behind us to pick up where we leave off and tie it to the school.
That close together and by you instead of.
Sir.
Move to consent, sir.
And the final item we have is Stormwater Awareness Week proclamation. This is the one you gave earlier, Mr. Chairman. Uh, staff recommends the Board of Commissioners approve this proclamation.
Move to consent.
Driver. Thank you, sir. Staff reports?
I've included the uh, year-to-date uh, budget report and the water and sewer construction reports in this. And I've also added the uh, estimated uh, completion dates for all our projects. Questions will be glad to answer.
On these that say on hold, what, what, what does that mean? That something we're not doing now or is it a process or need to start?
Different things, like the Jones Creek Lift Station, um, we're waiting for the uh, DOT work, the road work to get out the way. So we're not two projects, you know, just on top of each other causing some issues with uh, getting in and out. I mean, just different reasons. Uh, the Sugar Creek Booster Station, we're waiting on the hospital. Um, that's going to be prepared for it. So we've, we've done the design on those and it's sitting on the shelf, ready to bid when we forward with it.
Yeah, well, I, I appreciate you adding that section. I like that.
Do we have an appreciation of capacity estimates? That you mentioned the hospital. Are we able to make an educated guess on what their requirements would be?
Um, I'd have to go back and look at the plans to see, but I, um, we designed this, it's been a little while ago. I designed it when I was at a previous job, so uh, um.
Any disposal they have is also going to have to follow some OSHA. Six different alphabet agencies that all require.
Yeah.
Their own disposal.
We did those calculations. I just don't remember what they are off the top of my head.
The uh, commissioner or public comment? Have a couple of items for.
Moving to the full board, sir.
All right, with that, we are adjourned at 33.